I came up now. Power off, power off, it doesn't help me at all. I know that much. We actually went to Milton. And I did not know, I didn't um... Jeff Boy was not there anymore. Yeah. I don't know, it was a parting of the way, whatever that means. It was good, but I, you know, I always liked seeing him. I don't know what happened, but other than it was a parting of the way.
Yeah, I thought maybe, yeah. You gotta have the iPod in there.
Do you know why um Jeff Boy's not at, not anymore for Bill? Do you know why Jeff Boy's not at Milton's anymore? He's been on the, yeah, why though? I always liked him. Having one piece and passing it out, don't wanna eat when you're... I bet it won't be nowadays after that uh... Are you coming down to ma- are you coming down to any questions or can I aim for you to sign? I've actually got mine. I've got mine. Thirty fifth High School reunion, I'm gonna be going after class after Shambly. Make sure that I'm delivering all the beer and wine, probably you want to see me. I've ordered all the food, so um... Shambly. So let's, so then I'll just go back, so that, stay back down there for a minute. I was actually glad because I'm a Sheridan, a platinum club member, so, so they ought, they should upgrade to at least the twelve four. Twelve four at least is breakfast, drinks and appetizers. Don't work on a meeting, maybe Monday night? How long do we expect this meeting to take? Seven to ten. Flagellations is a very important part of the meeting stuff. Yes, it was last time's meeting too. No, it was, it was hanging pretty low last time. You staying down there Friday, Saturday? I can't do it Saturday night, everyone wants to do something Friday night, I can't, Saturday night I've got my thirty five, thirty six, I still live, not happy anniversary, I'm not that old. Is it Friday or Saturday? Friday, Friday or Saturday? My high school year is Saturday night. But it's the Shambly, so it's not gonna happen.
Are you guys ready? Alright, David, are we ready?
Boat timing's here.
Staff, we're ready? Ken, we're ready? Alright, we'll go ahead um... Okay, welcome chaplain Remco Brahm, chaplain for the City of Milton Police and Fire to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, let's pray together. Our God in heaven, thank you that you reign over us with wisdom and grace and peace and love and that all good things that we enjoy in life come from above. And in that vein of gratitude, we present ourselves afresh tonight in your service. And we confess our dependence upon you for wisdom and for patience and strength to carry out our duties. And we ask that you bestow these in rich measure tonight on the mayor and the city council and the city staff and all those that serve the city of Milton. And we ask that you surround with safety and protection those that are out serving our citizens on the streets. And Lord, we pray that you bless this city out of the riches of your grace and all that live in her, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, January twenty third, two thousand thirteen, to order. The city clerk, please call, roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'll be happy to call roll for the January twenty third, two thousand thirteen regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will please identify themselves by name, address and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance, Mayor Joe Lockwood. Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large is absent this evening unexcused. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I wanna welcome everybody here tonight and apologize for being a couple minutes late. Try to get moving along, so the city clerk, please sound our first item.
Our first item is approval of the meeting agenda, this is agenda item number thirteen zero one four.
Okay, do we have any other items on the agenda to consider?
We do, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask you to follow along with me here and clerk follow along with me, I'm gonna make some modifications or try to make some modifications. First thing we need to do is add an executive session immediately after reports and presentations for purposes of discussion pending a potential litigation. And because of, got a council member that potentially has to be gone by seven fifteen, the mayor has some time commitments tonight. Councilmember Thurman needs to recuse on one item, I'd like to move, I think, agenda item thirteen zero two two, which is the consideration of possible approval of a settlement agreement between the City of Milton and Action Outdoor Advertising. I'd like to add that to immediately, immediately before the zoning agenda. Also then, add an executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss land acquisition. And I believe that will get us where we need to be for today.
Okay, what would we, we're, executive session to discuss pending litigation, litigation?
Potential pending litigation, right after the reports and presentations. Move thirteen zero two two to just in front of the zoning agenda, worry about quorum issues with that if we don't. And then an executive session to deal with land acquisition at the end of the meeting, possible.
Okay, should I have a motion?
Should we all make a motion to approval of the meeting agenda with the changes of an executive session for pending a potential litigation moved after the reports and presentations? Also with a move of agenda item number one three zero two two, move before the zoning item and then also an executive session at the end to discuss land acquisition.
Okay, grab a second?
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Koontz, second by councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, as amended. Okay, next item is public comment, public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and turn it into our city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Does anybody need a public comment card that doesn't have one? Alright, is there any general public comment?
We do not have any, sir.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda if you don't mind reading those items out.
Our first item is approval of the December seventeenth, two thousand twelve regular council minutes, agenda item number thirteen zero one five. Next, approval of the financial statements for the period ending December two thousand twelve, agenda item number thirteen zero one six. Approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Strickland Pipeline and Construction, Inc. for demolition of structures at one three six nine zero State Highway nine. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Gresham Smith and Partners for concept plans for Hopewell Road Bethany Bend Way intersection improvements. This is agenda item number thirteen zero one eight.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by councilmember Lusk, second by councilmember Thurman to approve our consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll move on to our reports and presentations.
We have a proclamation recognizing Skills USA Charter Day at Cambridge High School. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, on the agenda, we've got the proclamation for Skills USA, a new student organization at Cambridge High. I'd like to point out that this is the first of what I hope will be many proclamations awarded to the Cambridge students. Skills USA was founded by Dr. Thomas Washburn of the Cambridge High Law and Justice Program with assistance from a group of committed students. I'm gonna read this proclamation, then I'd like everybody here that, here tonight for this honor to join myself and our council up front. So, let me first read the presentation. The proclamation. The proclamation here recognizing Skills USA Charter Day at Cambridge High School. Whereas Skills USA is the second largest career technical student organization in the United States with chapters in all fifty states and some US territories such as Guam, the Philippines and Puerto Rico. And whereas, the club was formed in nineteen sixty five by students and teachers looking to provide leadership to youth, looking for jobs and technical professions. And whereas, Skills USA trains students in specific technical skills as well as soft skills critical to the local and state economy. And whereas, Skills USA at Cambridge High School is be a charter by Dr. Tom Washburn and his leadership team consisting of Blake Jones as the president, Ombers Charma as the vice president, Leah Cadia, and I'm gonna have a problem with the last name pronunciation, but Chiof is the treasurer. Gabriel Fleck is the secretary, Curtis Johnson is the reporter, and Brett Warwick as the parliamentarian. And whereas, Skills USA promotes the enhancement of leadership skills by attending leadership training at the local, state and national level as well as improving leadership skills in all students by hosting leadership events at the school level. By participating in such events, this organization is able to fulfill its motto of preparing for leadership in the world of work. And whereas, Skills USA is a valuable asset to Cambridge High School and the City of Milton through the support of community and charities. And whereas, Skills USA prepares students as lifelong learners and highly skilled workers through competitions and study. And whereas, Skills USA at Cambridge High School is supported by the state director Ashley Brown, principal Dr. Esperka and advisor Dr. Tom Washburn. Now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton hereby dedicate Wednesday, January twenty third, two thousand thirteen, as Skills USA Charter Day in the City of Milton, Georgia. And this is given under our hand and seal of the City of Milton on the twenty third day of January two thousand thirteen. And if all of you would step forward and we'll make this presentation with myself and the council.
So you, so you're not doing any training on Saturday?
Yeah, no, I'm doing today.
Oh, okay, you're just not gonna be around for Saturday night?
We got executive session next.
Alright, we're, I need a motion to move into executive session to... So moved. To talk, to discuss litigation.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Longoria and a second by councilmember Thurman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that's unanimous.
Chris, I guess I stay here. Stay here and harass everybody. I'm not allowed. We have a lot up here if you'd like some candy, I moved it all the way from here. They're doing really good. I don't know, no, it's not here, I don't know it.
How do you guys like the candy, do you like that micro surface?
It was nice at first, but I can, it's already starting to wear.
Are we on, are we on track now for intersection improvement? About um... I don't know if that's the right decision or the wrong decision. Oh, that's it, okay, well that's good, that's a, you know what? Sometimes that can be very, very important. I'd be glad when this billboard stuff was over, because I, I spent a lot of time out here. They're gonna be off tomorrow. Off, sounds off. Um... Oh, yeah. I'll go in there and I can... I'm sorry, I don't know. I'm trying to... Can you see my... I think I'm, uh, yeah, I think I'm... Who can, uh, uh, guess the language? I don't know.
Of course, the council is aware that litigation ultimately turned out to be unsuccessful for Fulton County, meaning that their billboard code, their sign code was in fact stricken, and therefore, by way of judicial, literally judicial order and sanction, the City of Milton, which then came into creation while the litigation was pending, is now required to comply with that order and otherwise deal with the loss of that litigation. So that's the background, and that's what we have been attempting to do. Now, the city manager, in conjunction with staff, have been negotiating with these various billboard companies for literally years, over a year, to try and work out a reasonable compromise that would, on the one hand, acknowledge as we must the outcome of a litigation, while on the other hand vindicate the City of Milton's interests and rights in diminishing the impact of this on our citizens. We also have an obligation pursuant to the Open Meetings Act to come out and reveal, as we should, the substantial terms of the settlement. So that is what you have in front of you this evening. I have provided each of you a copy of the settlement agreement, and I want to go over the material terms with you very briefly. Before I commence, Councilmember Thurman, do you need...
I will need to recuse myself. Do I need to leave the room, or am I okay as long as I...do I just need to go sit out there, or?
You can just...pursuant to our rules, you can stay there, just don't participate in discussion.
I will not participate in discussion.
This is an open session, our rules allow you to stay where you are. Pursuant to the settlement agreement that we have worked up, and quite frankly, negotiations were ongoing as latest this afternoon, if I can very briefly go over with you the moving parts. First of all, there has, we have come to a consensus that there will be a maximum of four signs allowed pursuant to the settlement agreement. It's not a guarantee of four signs, but it is a maximum of an allowance of four signs with respect to the settlement agreement. We have agreed on a node approach, meaning that the exact parcel of property where the signs will be erected is not identified, but there is, are in nodes, or areas where the signage can be placed pursuant to private agreement with parties, ground leases, et cetera. There is one node which is along the adjacent to State Route 400, that's called Node One. Node Two is along Highway Nine, formerly the McMillan Strip Centers. Node Number Three is on Highway Nine, Winward Parkway. There are three nodes, or three parcels identified under Node Three, 633 North Main Street, 621 North Main Street, or 612 North Main Street. There is a Node Four, which is Highway Nine near Bethany Bend Road. The specific parcels are 13674 Highway Nine, 13690 Highway Nine, 13700 Highway Nine, and 13784 Highway Nine. And of course, I'm reading out multiple parcel numbers, understand those are the options from which they have to pick, but only one sign can go in any node, only one. And then there's Node Five, which is on State Route 140, Arnold Mill Road. Three potential tracks there, 13450 Arnold Mill Road, 13625 Arnold Mill Road, and 13705 Arnold Mill Road. So that's the node approach that we have selected. Again, there can be, in any event, no more than four signs, and only one sign per node. All right? The height of the signs would be in Nodes Two, Three, Four, and Five, ten foot, six inches by thirty-six feet in size, and then on Node One, fourteen feet by forty-eight feet in size. This would resolve all issues related to damages, of which the City of Milton would pay none, and also attorney's fees, the City of Milton would pay none. I want to go ahead and say, for the record, and I know that we have discussed this, but because we are acting pursuant to court mandate, you know, we have to be mindful of the fact that although the city itself has a signed ordinance, we are not going to be in a position to enforce that sign code in its totality against these companies. Now, I will tell you, we have endeavored to do all that we can, we have negotiated with the sign companies, and to their credit, they have worked with us to try and comply with as many components of the Milton Sign Code as they believe they reasonably can. But I just want the council to understand we're in a bit of a disadvantage, because the sign code that mattered, which was the Fulton Sign Code, was stricken. I also wanted to tell you that the advertisers or the companies involved in litigation have also agreed, under this settlement agreement, to comply to the extent possible with the Milton Tree Code, which I know is something that is obviously important to the citizens of Milton and this council, and that is, of course, is embodied in this ordinance, or in this, excuse me, in this settlement agreement. Let me just see if there's any more substantive components. These signs can be dual face or double face signs. It is anticipated that they will be LED signs, as opposed to static or tri-vision signs. The companies will be required to pull sign permits as a part of going out and constructing these signs. They will not be required to pay a permit fee, and the City of Milton will have to expedite our processing of those permits. Members of the council, I think that is all of the truly substantive components. Just two additional things, just for purposes of bringing it out to you. Number one, once these signs are constructed, the signs themselves become, or take, will basically legally become like any other sign, or billboard, if you will, in Milton. That is, they will become what's called a legal non-conforming use or structure on the property. In other words, they will be entitled to no greater protection than any other sign, nor would they be entitled to any more punitive measures than any other sign. They will simply be a legal non-conforming use, and all of our requirements pertaining to legal non-conforming structures will be applicable, and they've agreed to that, and that's appropriate. So on the one hand, while they have gotten the judicial sanction to be able to erect the signs, they are not entitled to any sort of enhanced protections for the next fifty years with respect to those signs, if you understand the point I make. They have the right to erect, and then they become like every, every other billboard company that may have a sign in the city. With respect to this evening, I have passed out to you a settlement agreement that represents the latest and greatest version of negotiations, representing negotiations between the parties. However, quite frankly, given, just sort of a give and take, and the ebb and flow of the negotiation even until this late date, if the council was inclined to accept this settlement agreement this evening, I have now gone over the material terms of the settlement agreement as I am required to do, I've gone over the parcels, I've gone over the parties. There are some provisions that if you make a motion to accept, I would ask that you modify them as part of your motion. On page five of the settlement agreement that was handed out, you will see on the second line, it says additionally, the provisions of 6423037A, and it says, "Two and Five shall have no application with respect to this agreement." I would request that that be additionally, the provisions of 6423037A and 5A shall have no application with respect to this agreement, period. And the remainder of that sentence that says, "As both provisions may warfare," the remainder of that would be stricken. I would also ask that if you approve, that's one modification, I would also ask that if you approve, you just simply give license as part of your approval for us to renumber the exhibits, to make sure the exhibits provide a cohesive package. There are about five exhibits referenced. One of the exhibits is basically a sketch showing the impact of ingress and ingress on trees. One of them attempts to show what a V-shaped sign, as anticipated under this settlement agreement, may look like, but the order A, B, C, and D may not match or align appropriately right now. My expectation would be that if the council approves this settlement agreement, I will then go back and modify, consistent with your directive, and then bring you back a finalized warrant for the mayor to sign. That would contain the exhibits in the right order to make sure that's correct, and also that would implement the change on page five. I just walked through with you. Mr. Mayor, of course, I am open to any questions, and I'm sure the city manager is as well, you may have with respect to this settlement.
Anybody have any questions? And I'll just say beforehand that, of course, we've been working on this thing for a couple of years now, so we've all been through this and discussed it, so everybody's very familiar with it, but you got any questions, Joe?
Well, I just want some clarification. I mean, obviously, this is stuff that, like you said, Ken, started way before the City of Milton was incorporated, so through no fault or bone, we have sort of inherited this. This doesn't place any kind of restrictions on future billboard applications that may come before the city, so moving forward, once we take care of this business, moving forward, if somebody wanted to erect a billboard, they'd have to present a application, adhere to all the ordinances, the way they exist today on the books, so moving forward, we're in good shape. This is just sort of cleanup on old stuff.
That's correct, Councilmember Langoria.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, and we need to take action on this.
Mr. Mayor, yes, please.
So I'll open it up for a motion for approval or not.
Mayor, I believe that we approve the settlement agreement between the City of Milton and Action Outdoor Advertising JV LLC, KH Outdoor LLC, Covenant Media of Georgia LLC, Granite Outdoor, Granite State Outdoor Advertising Inc., over pending, pending, threatened, and adjudicated litigation related to applications for billboards within corporate boundaries of Milton or such applications, were submitted to Fulton County Government prior to the City of Milton's incorporation with the modification that on page five, we adjust the language to, to be in accordance to what the attorney just stated, the city attorney just stated.
Councilmember Langoria, as part of your motion, before there's a second, would you also indicate that with the, also the authority to reorganize the exhibits, such that they follow a chronological order?
Absolutely, I forgot to mention that.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Okay, I'm gonna try to repeat it, but I've got a motion on the record from Councilmember Langoria, second by Councilmember Lusk. Is there any discussion on this? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? That's unanimous with Councilmember Large Absent and Councilmember Thurman abstaining. Bill, you want to make a comment?
Yes, as you mentioned before, we've been working on this for a couple of years, an executive session, and it involved litigation. And it's not the best of worlds out there for Milton, but I think it's the best thing that we could have done here in consideration of the position that we've been put in by the courts, and I think our city attorney and city manager handled this admirably, and I think this is the best situation we could have come up with, and commend the team that's been working on this.
I think you go, I would agree too. We've gone from mandated from the judge number of billboards down to about twenty-five percent of that, so thanks to everybody that's been involved with this. All right, we'll move on to our next item, which we'll get back to the zoning agenda, so if our city clerk will please call that item.
I'd like to read the rules first. At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. Those items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of ten minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. The planning commission has heard the rezoning agenda items and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the community development department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating two hundred and fifty dollars or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the planning commission's meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed two hundred and fifty dollars or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission's meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ 1216, VC 1206, 12855 Hopewell Road, Beazer Homes, to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to NUP Neighborhood Unit Plan to develop twenty-nine single-family homes at a density of four point eighteen units per acre, a two-part concurrent variance. One, reduce the periphery setback from forty feet to twenty-five feet along the east and north property lines and seven feet along the south property line, section sixty-four nine two one I. Second, to allow sidewalks along one side of the street on the interior of the development, section sixty-four two three nine three. This is agenda item number thirteen zero one nine. First presentation was heard at the January seventh, two thousand and thirteen regular council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council? This first slide shows the location of the subject site along Hopewell Road. It is located, as was mentioned, at twelve eight five five Hopewell Road. The subject site contains six point, six point nine three one acres, located just north of the city of Alpharetta. The site is currently zoned AG1 Agricultural with one single-family resident on the site. The applicant seeks a rezoning to NUP Neighborhood Unit Plan to develop twenty-nine single-family residences. The applicant also seeks a two-part concurrent variance to reduce periphery setbacks for the development, and seeks permission not to build sidewalks on both sides of the internal streets. The existing zoning is shown on this slide here, and you see the AG1 zoning in place. The Georgia four hundred Highway Nine LCI planning study, which was recently approved by the mayor and city council, in essence amended the comprehensive plan in terms of future land use for this area. And this particular site, which is shown on the very western corner, northwestern corner of this map that you're looking at here, defines this area to be a transition area. And I want to read to you what the planning study defined as this transition. That it should be low-scale, primarily residential, likely senior attached, a small lot, single-family, with limited neighborhood serving retail office. Maintains lower-scale development with appropriate buffers to residential neighborhoods. Encourage linear paths along roadways. Limit setbacks from Highway Nine where practical, and require parking lot and right-of-way landscaping. The next slide shows existing uses surrounding the site, and I'd like to just spend a few moments moving around the site by number, just to show you the types of land uses that are currently surrounding this site, which will, I think, help you to define the appropriate transition use for this area, I think. And I'm going to start with number one, which is directly to the north, and that currently has one unit per acre at the moment on that. The area defined as number four, which is directly to the east, which is the Southfield subdivision, currently has two point five units per acre. Moving southward, number seven, area number seven, is in the city of Alpharetta, however, it is Zone C2, but undeveloped at the moment. Heading westerly, number eight, is a site of the assisted living facility currently under construction, which includes a hundred thirty-three units, and when you divide that into approximately the four acres that are, that the site is in size, you end up with about thirty-three units per acre on parcel number eight. Directly across the street, again, moving to the west, on area number ten, that is scattered single-family residences, and it's approximately one unit per acre. And then the last area, just to the north of the number ten area, which is area number eleven, is the Brickery Crest subdivision, which is a community unit plan, and that essentially has an average of one point eight eight units per acre. So you can see it's surrounded by a varied number of density and also uses, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because it does relate, I think, to the transition as defined on the LCI plan. So the next slide shows the chart that I've just read from, I'm going to move from that onto the next one, which is the site plan that was submitted November the sixth, two thousand and twelve. And then we have analyzed that site plan in terms of development standards for a neighborhood unit plan, and essentially, the proposed development meets all the standards of an NUP, with the exception of the very last one at the bottom, in that the development standard calls for a minimum perimeter setback for the entire development shall be forty feet. They are asking for some variances from that minimum forty-foot setback, which I will discuss as we move through this presentation. Additionally, the following chart here shows the applicant's proposed building setbacks for individual lots. I should note that the NUP allows for the applicant to specify building setbacks, and so he has so specified them, and they are in front of you here on this chart, in that the front yard setback is proposed to be ten feet, the side yard, zero to seven, with fourteen feet minimum between the structures. The side yard setback adjacent to the street is proposed to be seven feet, and the rear yard setback at fifteen feet. Staff recommends that lots number twenty through twenty-nine be alley excess lots. These are the lots that are in the middle of the site plan. This type of design will further create a walkable village-type community that will provide an alternative subdivision design for the area where there are typical suburban single-family designs. This requirement will be included in the recommended conditions. We continue with the site plan analysis in regard to Part One of VC 12-06, which is the request to reduce the periphery setback from forty feet to twenty-five feet along the east and north property lines and seven feet along the south property line. In regard to the request for the east property line setback, we feel that the applicant has not submitted credible evidence that relief, if granted, would not offend the spirit or intent of this zoning ordinance, and that there are such extraordinary, extraordinary and exceptional situ, exceptional situations or conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property that the literal or strict application of this zoning ordinance would create an unnecessary hardship. Therefore, staff recommends denial of Part One, VC 12-06, along the east property line. In regard to the south and north property line setbacks, the applicant has also requested that the periphery setback along the south property line be reduced from forty to seven feet, and the north property line to twenty-five feet. Staff notes that the adjacent property to the south is within the city of Milton, but has been designated as a no-access easement with a minimum width of fifty feet and increasing in width going to the east. This property is owned by the Hopewell Road Properties LLC, which is under development for the senior living facility within the city of Alpharetta. In regard to the north property line, there is a small strip of land adjacent to the entrance to Southfield that is part of a lot within that subdivision. There are no improvements on this portion of the parcel. Also, it appears as though the applicant's property abuts the Southfield subdivision access road. So in essence, we feel that there is already sufficient buffer at both the north and the south side that this variance could be supported. Based on these facts, relief, if granted, would not offend the spirit or intent of this zoning ordinance, and that there are extraordinary, exceptional situations or conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property that the literal or strict application of this zoning ordinance would create an unnecessary hardship due to size, shape, or topography, or other extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions not caused by the applicant. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of Part One of VC 12-06 along the south and north property lines. Landscape strips and buffers. According to section sixty-four dash two thirty-seven G of the zoning ordinance, unless otherwise specified, lots developed with single-family detached dwelling units are not required to provide landscape areas or zoning buffers. However, staff notes that twenty-foot landscape strip and fencing are required around all detention ponds. The site plan does not indicate the required landscape strip and fencing. Said fencing is required to be a six-foot-high, five-board equestrian-style fence with two-inch by four-inch welded wire constructed around it. Other site plan considerations, sidewalks. Part Two of VC 12-06 Two, to allow sidewalks along only one side of the street on the interior of the development. Pursuant to section sixty-four dash two three nine two of the zoning ordinance, sidewalks are required on both sides of the street, and that they be a minimum of five feet in width with a minimum two-foot beauty strip between the sidewalk and the curb. The applicant's letter of intent states that their reason for deleting sidewalks along one side of the internal streets is to provide more green space and planting area. It is staff's opinion that sidewalks should be provided to both sides of the street to encourage a pedestrian-friendly and safe environment for the residents. Accordingly, the applicant has not submitted credible evidence that, one, relief, if granted, would not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance, and, two, there are such extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property that the literal or strict application of the zoning ordinance would create an unnecessary hardship due to size, shape, topi, topography, et cetera. Therefore, staff recommends denial of Part Two dash VC 12-06. Staff notes that although the site plan does not indicate sidewalks along Hopewell Road, the applicant has indicated that they will be constructed to continue the pedestrian accessibility between subdivisions along Hopewell Road and connected with the senior living facility to the south within the city of Alpharetta. Environmental site analysis. The environmental site analysis report is sufficient and satisfies the requirement of section sixty-four dash twenty-one twenty-six. Departmental comments. City arborist, the site has about seventy-five percent tree coverage, mostly that of young pine trees. Recompense will be required, and appears that all trees should be able to be placed on the site. Placement and species selected for recompense shall be approved by the city arborist. Departmental comments continued. Fire marshal, based on the width of the pavement curve to curve of twenty-four feet, no on-street parking will be permitted. Further evaluation of the plan will be made at the time of the land disturbance permit application. Public works. Subdivision regulations require a minimum of a one-hundred-foot radius at the central line of all curves. The curve near the stormwater facility does not appear to meet that standard. However, discussions on the issue have taken place between the applicant and the public works director. In terms of the impact... In terms of the impact on the local schools, we did communicate with Fulton County Board of Education, and we were told that the schools that would service children from this subdivision include Cogburn Woods Elementary School, Hopewell Middle School, and Cambridge High School. In terms of whether or not Cogburn Woods Elementary could meet the demand, based on the current amount of students they have there, the response was no. In terms of Hopewell Middle School, they also responded no in terms of being able to meet the demand. And however, Cambridge High School did respond yes, that they could meet the demand of students, and that the number of students are listed on your chart in front of you. We did do a financial model in terms of the cost-revenue projections on this application over a 20-year period, and it was determined that over 20 years, using present values, that there would be a loss of $117,976 attributed to the services to development versus the amount of taxes generated. Public involvement. The Design Review Board met December 4th, 2012, and they questioned the request for sidewalks on only one side of the internal streets. The CZIM, which met November 28th, 2012, there were 12 residents from the community in attendance, and in addition, the staff has received several emails regarding this development, which are included in your report. The public participation meeting was held by the applicant, pardon me, at the Kroger Meeting Room on Highway 9 on December 5th, 2012. There were four citizens in attendance. The following was their concern: the concurrent variance to reduce the periphery setback from 40 feet to 25 feet. And staff has recommended denial for this concurrent variance along the east side. Standards of review. It has been determined that the proposed 29-lot, single-family residential subdivision developed at a density of 4.18 units per acre provides a transition from the south with the senior living facility under development within the city of Alpharetta toward the medium-density, single-family residential to the north and east at two units per acre and 2.5 units per acre, respectively. It is staff's opinion that the proposed use is suitable with adjacent and nearby developments and zonings that are approved with staff's recommended conditions. It is staff's opinion that the proposal will not adversely affect existing use or usability of the adjacent properties as described above. The proposed development provides a transition between the existing densities and uses. It has been determined, however, that the subject site may have a reasonable use currently as it is zoned AG1 agricultural. Staff does not anticipate a significant impact on public services or utilities. Comments from the Fulton County Board of Education are included in the report as it relates to the estimated number of new students for the proposed rezoning, which will have an impact on the elementary and middle schools. The applicant will be required to provide the transportation improvements listed in the recommended conditions. These improvements will help ameliorate the increased amount of traffic created by the proposed development. The proposed development provides a transition of densities from the south to the north. If developed with the recommended conditions, it is consistent with the Georgia 400/Highway 9 LCI planning study recommendation of transition for the subject site. Based on these facts, it is grounds to recommend approval for the proposed NUP, Neighborhood Unit Plan, if developed with the recommended conditions. The recommended conditions are: for a complete list of recommended conditions, please refer to the staff report. Highlights from the recommended conditions are as follows. NUP Neighborhood Unit Plan approved conditionally. No more than 29 single-family dwelling units at a maximum density of 4.18 units per acre. Minimum perimeter setback along the south property line, 7 feet. Minimum perimeter setback along the north property line, 25 feet. Lots numbered 20 through 29 in the site plan submitted November 6th, 2012, shall be rear-loaded alley access lots. The recommended conditions continue. Sidewalks shall be constructed for both sides of the street for the entire development per City Code Chapter 50 subdivisions. Now, shall be a northbound right-turn lane on Hopewell Road at New Access Drive shall be constructed. Southbound left-turn lane on Hopewell Road at New Access Drive shall be constructed. In conclusion, the proposed 29-lot, single-family subdivision, if developed with the recommended conditions, is consistent with the Georgia 400/State Route 9 LCI planning study suggestion for transition. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of RZ 12-16 to rezone from AG Agricultural to NUP Neighborhood Unit Plan. That is my presentation, Mr. Mayor, and certainly willing to take any questions.
Okay. Before we get into a public hearing, I'll open it up for questions to staff. Bill?
Just a statement here. In the interest of full disclosure, let council members here know that Mr. Steve Check, who's representative here tonight from Beazer Homes, is my appointee to the Design Review Board. Feel that relationship will have no influence on my decision on this application tonight. I feel I can be totally unbiased.
Okay.
Any other questions? Tell me a little more about the rear entry, the lots there in the middle. What's the rationale?
Well, the rationale is to provide a different style of homes, and that all the homes that are being proposed within the subdivision are front entry, in terms of the access to the garages. And we felt to sort of mix up the type of style to make a more interesting, so you don't have as much of the cookie-cutter effect in terms of the same style of homes, but a little more mixed. And because they were in the middle, they lent themselves very well to putting an alley along the rear of both sides of the homes, in that donut hole, so to speak, in the middle.
So it's not for any functionality or safety, it's more for instance?
Not at all. It was to create a, and again, the idea of having the two sidewalks was to create a walkable community that had its own identity with a mix of housing styles.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Bill?
In the central units there, with the rear alley, the alley between the two banks of the homes, don't you feel that by including that alley there, that it's going to push the structures closer to the road itself? And if you do have a sidewalk there, that's further going to reduce any green space between the home and the sidewalk?
Yeah. I think a lot of the subdivisions that you're seeing now are pedestrian-oriented, and the idea being to move the porches, and we're encouraging front of the apartments, is to move them as close to the sidewalk as possible, so that as people walk along and people sit on the porches, it creates a neighborhood. And so having the sidewalks and having the porches close to the sidewalks is really a preference in that sense.
I'd make note that the Southfield subdivision only has sidewalks on one side of the street.
Karen?
What width of these sidewalks compared to what our standard sidewalks are? I'd rather see one wider sidewalk than two smaller sidewalks.
It's five feet with a landscape strip between the curb and the sidewalk, which I believe is, what, one foot or two?
Two.
Okay, so two and five. Landscape strip of two and then a five-foot sidewalk.
And what is our standard, normal standard sidewalk? Is that a five-foot sidewalk?
That's our normal, yes.
But is that normal everywhere, or is that just our normal? I don't think it's normal everywhere.
Some of the older ones you might see are three to four.
Three to four. Because I'd rather see just one five-foot one than two smaller ones, so.
Kira has her response.
I was just going to say, the five-foot is normal to what you would see in a standard subdivision, where we have multi-use trails, then you start to see the eight, 10, and 12-foot wide sidewalks, similar to what we just put in on Bethany Bend.
Because I'd may rather see one six-foot one than two fives. Two fives with the two-foot grass in between them, and you're going to have street, grass, sidewalk, little bit of grass, and then a house. So I mean, it's going to be pretty compact. I'd almost rather see one six-foot sidewalk and only have it on one side of the street, personally.
I have a question from engineering side, and can ask this later to the applicant, too, but, you know, looking at all the comments and positions of cities or neighborhoods around and citizens that live around, there are concerns, you know, a lot of it, obviously, is with density and setbacks, which I know you have addressed, and some buffers and variances have not agreed upon that the applicant would like. But, you know, talking about putting the alleyway in between, or is there other ways that possibly could move these houses closer to Hopewell Road in order to beef up the buffers a little bit, you know, that may help the surrounding neighborhoods? I don't know if you guys have looked at it all or not, but if that's a possibility. So, again, I can ask that of the applicant later, but, you know, something that, because that seems to be the majority of concern, is privacy and closeness and whatnot, so, with the density.
And I had asked you in an email what the rear yard setbacks were for the adjacent subdivisions. I believe it was a, was it 40 feet?
Robert, if you can respond to that, please.
I have the conditions.
Okay, because I think.
I have the density, but I didn't, okay.
Yeah, I think we need to look at what the rear yard setback is to, to make sure we're consistent in, to the adjacent neighborhoods.
The rear is 30 feet.
The rear is 30 feet for them? Okay.
Okay. If there's no other questions for Kathy or our staff, we'll open up the public hearing and then open it up for those in support of this application first.
Our first comment comes from Mr. Pete Hendricks.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Pete Hendricks, practice law at 6085 Lake Forest Drive in Sandy Springs. Kathy has exhaustively gone through the application and her review, her analysis, so I'll be very brief. We filed a modified and amended site plan yesterday that I hope you all, if you see fit, to direct yourselves towards an approval, would incorporate, in that it has reduced the number of lots from 29 to 26 lots. That has the effect of changing the density from 4.18 to 3.8 units to the acre. And that would be the information material in paragraph one and two. In addition to that, because of the sensitivity to Southfield of that setback area, the modified and amended site plan shows adherence to the 40-foot setback, and in addition to that, that there be inside of that 40 feet, a 25-foot natural undisturbed buffer along the east property line, which is the common property line to Southfield. I would respectfully request, that is to condition 3K, that you all, I'll actually start with J, that you delete J, that's the one for the rear entry alley load, and that respectfully request that on 3K, which is the two sidewalk issue, that you allow it to be just to the one sidewalk. I'm going to let Steve Check take the rest of the time. He is the Beazer representative, and he's going to walk you through specificity as to the product, because we do have much varied housing product that would be put in. Actually, with some of the corner lots, they would be able to be side entry, so not all of the lots would be front entry. Steve?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Steve Check, and my address is 840 Nettlebrook Lane in Milton, Georgia. And as you've mentioned, I represent Beazer Homes in this application for the subject property. A couple of things, I think was handed to you, a booklet, which you all may have in front of you. In that booklet, there are a couple of sections in there. The first section I'd like you to open to is the, is a section that I kind of identified as the entrance, and a couple of comments that we've been hearing throughout this process, how are we going to be treating the entrance, the buffers and what have you? And what we've done is provided a landscape plan, an entrance plan, a monument plan here that I think is kind of is much in keeping with the city of Milton. It does have, along the frontage, a series of stone columns with the Milton fence, and coming into an entrance sign on just on one side. We feel like keeping it a bit low-scale is in keeping with the city of Milton. Also, we have reserved an area here, and as mentioned, we are abutting up against the city of Alpharetta, so as you're traveling north on Hopewell, we've reserved an area for entering the city of Milton sign, and you can see kind of a rendering of that that we've provided, which has the new logo and what have you. As you come into the community, we set these homes back from Hopewell and faced them onto Hopewell Road for a purpose, is to provide some green space up front as you're coming in. And as you can see, we've got a rendering of that green space, which does have sidewalks leading to it, some open area, which terminates into kind of a sitting area, a little cul-de-sac, if you will. And, you know, once, we've got some other details here, and part of what we were hearing, too, is the buffering is behind the fence, we're going to be keeping a large hedge. So from Hopewell Road, the intent here is to create a screening so somebody that's driving on Hopewell, it's not that we don't want people to see our homes, but we are trying to provide a nice buffer, and created buffer. Now, on the northern part of the property is wooded, so we're going to stop that and keep the natural vegetation. Also, in your book, you'll see some plans that I've provided. One of the first things that we did in this process is we met with staff, we met with the city architect, and came up with plans that I think are in keeping with the city of Milton, which included porches, metal roofs, carriage-style doors, and other details that are in line with more craftsman-style, farmhouse-style, and colonial-style. So, and those plans there, they start from 2,700 square feet and go up to 3,000. I think we're kind of, you've got them there, but they're also on the screen being thumb through. So, you know, we're proud of the project. We've come a long ways in working this. As Pete said, we have reduced the number of lots from 29 to 26, added buffers, and at this point, really, I'd like to save some time for comments or questions and rebuttal.
We have one more comment from Michelle Tubbs.
These are comments in your favor or for?
In support.
In support, okay.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm getting over a bit of a head fiddle, so you'll excuse me. I wanted to say that I've got both positive comments, and I think comments about opportunities that we still have to make. I'm glad that it's a single-family detached plan that's being proposed, as opposed to some of the other transitional items that could be built here, like office or attached homes. I am glad that we've been able to work on keeping that 40-foot setback with the Southfield subdivision. I think we still have an opportunity to work on density. I think moving from 29 to 26 is in the right direction, but has not yet achieved an optimal plan. Thank you.
Ms. Tubbs, can you state your address for the record, please?
Michelle Tubbs, 70 Southfield Lane, Milton, Georgia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all the comment we have.
Okay. Then I'll open it up to those in opposition of this.
Our first comment comes from Francois Coulomb.
Hi, I'm Francois Coulomb. I live at 890 Southfield Lane. Our house is directly behind a small piece of land that is discussed here. We strongly oppose a rezoning and urge you to reject it, like the planning commission did last month after careful consideration. you to reject it, like the planning commission did last month after careful consideration. The city of Milton prides itself on its quality of life, rural feel, and having a very smart and sensible approach to development. And this plan presented here goes against everything that Milton represents and stands for. Cramming twenty-six or twenty-nine houses on a small sliver of land, which is squeezed, wedged between a busy road, established neighborhood, and a retirement complex with over a hundred twenty units is anything but sensible approach to development. Also, the planning commission, at the planning commission meeting, we heard about the development, that the development might, number one, cause attendance issues at schools, and number two, have a negative fiscal impact on the city. So bottom line for us is that not all pieces of land in Milton need to be developed, even when people decide that it's time for them to cash in on their piece of land. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment comes from James Lawler.
James Lawler, nine-hundred Southfield Lane over in Milton, Georgia, in the Southfield subdivision. I, too, back up to the eastern border of this proposed plan and strongly oppose it. I feel like this is a case of greed, and greed in this case is not good. Twenty-nine homes on six point nine-three-two acres, or whatever it might be, and four point one, or twenty-six homes at three point eight, still goes completely against what Southfield has, what Vicory Crest has, what a couple of the other single-family homes, and what Hopewell Plantation and all the neighboring ones. Take out city of Alpharetta's cotton wood estates. It's not Milton. So I feel like we have a issue where packing way too many homes, twenty-six, twenty-nine, into that small sliver of land backing up into the backyards of numerous of my neighbors is unacceptable, and I strongly oppose this, and I hope you do too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last comment comes from Chris Straw.
Hello, good evening. My name is Chris Straw. I live at two-two-nine-seven Milton Place. I'm one of the thirty-five other homeowners in Milton Place and Vicory Crest that wrote a letter and submitted to the planning commission opposing the community. I'm not gonna go into the details, 'cause you, my understanding is you have that already. I just want to reiterate some of the comments that have already come out. We feel like this community is, is way too dense for the size of property that, that it's on. Also, we feel like if this community went in as planned or proposed, it kind of sets the precedent for whatever might go in across the road, future developments there or elsewhere in Milton. And that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, is there any, is there still time? If the applicant has anything, or I'll close the public hearing?
Yes, I think Kathy did a good job in ticking off to you the parameters that your Georgia four-hundred, highway nine, LCI, promulgated and that you adopted in April for this area, with specificity that is strongly suggested that it be residential, that it be transitional residential, utilization of small lots. And I think that that is reflective of the site plan that you have in front of you. I know that there's been a great deal of reach-out by Mr. Check in the immediately surrounding area with the neighborhood and with individuals within those neighborhoods to try and come up with some modification and amendment to the plan to make it more acceptable. I think that that has been done, particularly reflective of what's been done along the easterly property line with adherence to the forty feet, to and including in putting in that forty-five foot, a forty-foot area, twenty-five foot natural undisturbed buffer. So I'll let Steve wrap up with the final comments.
Just a couple more comments on the product that's in front of you and how it relates to kind of the diversity of the product. There are, in that, in that package, there, there are twelve different styles of homes there, so we feel like this will not be any product that's gonna be cookie cutter type. And as for, you know, the, the alleyway, feel like it's a little bit more of an urban type of product, and quite frankly, not a product that we, we built. And trying to cut down on impervious area and detention would, would like that not to be a condition, along with the sidewalk, you know, once again, impervious area cutting down in this small community feel like one side. Just real quick, and I did wanna kind of mention a little bit about how I came about this property, and I traveled this road quite often. And when the construction of the apartments went up, I inquired about it and talked to staff and reviewed the LCI and, you know, made a proposal in an, on the, in an application for twenty-nine lots, which I felt like was in keeping with the LCI. And certainly, I felt like that could, could have been, the use for the LCI could have been a higher use, attached or senior living. So I felt like it may have, you know, been a compromise in the LCI-
One minute remaining.
And, and a lower use. So I do wanna reserve some time for some questions, so.
Okay, what we can know is ask your questions. It won't count on the time. That's the end of the public comments. I'll hold up. I'll close the public hearing and move on to council discussion and questions from council on this, either to staff or, or the applicant. Anybody have any questions or comments?
While it has the minimum lot area of five thousand square feet, what is, what is, is that what they are? Is it at the minimum? It looks like there's some, some different shape ones on the perimeter.
We have added some width to the ones along the north. I don't know the actual square footage, but it's not five thousand square feet. And in addition to that, these, we, we reduced one lot along here and then two along the back, in part to, you know, to accommodate some of the concerns by the adjacent neighborhoods. But I don't know what the minimum is, but it is greater than five thousand square feet. It's probably closer to fifty-five hundred as the minimum. And then on the, on the north, you know, margin that.
Oh, that little inset diagram that you have here on the, on the top of the sheet indicates lot width of fifty-two feet and lot depth of a hundred feet. So you're talking about fifty-two hundred, and that'd be minimum, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And this kind of goes to staff, and then Mr. Check could address this. Again, going to my question earlier, is there any, because obviously the density and buffers are, are a major issue with our citizens, that our citizens have, is, and I'd certainly applaud you for looking at it and coming from twenty-nine to twenty-six, but is there some, you know, is there any other actions that you could take that would minimize the density a little bit more? I mean, obviously, you can make the lots bigger, but without, you know, totally impacting the, the project, or you wanna explain how you came up with twenty-six?
Sure. You know, much of this has to do with economics of the project, but I mean, in, in light of the highest and best use of this property, you know, adjacent to the apartments, you know, there is, you know, a certain number of lots that makes sense. There is, you know, I think Michelle mentioned that there are twenty-four lots. I, I think we could live with twenty-four lots in this project. And, you know, I would recommend, if that is, you know, what, what you approve, that we take a look at increasing the size and width along the north here, and, and then, you know, selecting an area to, to do some other changes, but, you know, at least one along the north and then, and then one maybe up front in the community to reduce it. But when you're looking from twenty, going from twenty-nine to twenty-four, you know, it may not sound like a lot, five lots, but when you, percentage-wise, it's a great deal.
Is there any way to, you know, put more of the density on the, and it may not be, but on the-
Closer to Hopewell?
I believe it'd be the east side, you know, adjacent to the city of Alpharetta.
The south.
That's the south side. Is there any way to put more density on that side to alleviate density on the, between Southfield subdivision?
If there were an additional lot, two lots, we could take a look at the north side and, and then just keep. So we would look at widening up the lots on the east border and then just maintaining the density up front, you know, the density, higher density up against Hopewell and, and Retirement Village.
Karen?
The twenty-four lots would get it down a little under three point five units per acre, which is more in keeping, I think, than the, with the adjacent subdivisions in the original application.
If I, you know, if we lost two, I think that matches the number of homes along the Southfield. Right now, I see seven, and we've got nine, so if we took two out, that's seven up against seven.
Anybody else? Any comments? Any questions, Matt?
Yeah, I, for everybody that's here in opposition, I, I know how you feel on this, 'cause I grew up and had a subdivision that built right across the front street of my house and didn't like it one bit at all. And I, and I know how that feels in that standpoint, but I also look for every reason why we can say no to something. And, you know, we, we started an LCI study here over a year and a half ago. A lot of staff researched, a lot of money spent, a lot of engineers that came together to come up with a plan for our community in this area. And this piece of property is within that LCI study. And I look at it and I say, well, if that is what we want, ultimately, this is where the rubber meets the road. And if the rubber is gonna meet the road here, you know, what are the things that we would want in this type of situation? One, I think we have a local developer. That's a good thing. That's what I would rather have if that were the case. You know, lot sizes, you know, for the buffer on the backside, you know, a lot of people in opposition, it's a thirty-foot setback versus a forty percent, which is what the developer is now proposing. So I, I can't see that one as an argument either. So looking at this, I like the designs from where I see. I like the style of houses. And it is a transitional piece. It is something that we spent over a year and a half to, to talk about. And does that mean that those across the street are threatened to have that same type of development? No, because it's not in the LCI plan. Looking at the map of the LCI, that's why we are in this property. So looking at where we are, staying within the framework of what Milton is, and going through citizen involvement and meeting after meeting of a lot of citizen input, this is, in my mind, the right way to go for what it is that we're looking for, for a piece of property in this area. And, you know, I don't know all the details about, you know, reducing the lot sizes. I'd be open to that, definitely, and figuring out a way to make that happen. But conceptually, you know, I'm not finding a reason to say no on this. And I just wanna say that.
Yeah, well, there's two pieces to this. The, the change from AG one to the neighborhood unit plan, I think, makes a lot of sense. I think that's sort of a no-brainer. In terms of the variances, I, I agree that, you know, we have spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of effort in the LCI to try to figure out, you know, what characteristics we need in what areas. And while we don't have to get into the details of the number of units, I think that the use of this in terms of having it be a different product than Vicory or the, the surrounding, you know, subdivisions and, and developments, I mean, that's what buffers are supposed to be about. They're supposed to be about variations and changes to, to move from one thing to another. So the concern that I had, and, you know, I don't worry about, is there a thirty-foot setback on one development? And, you know, I worry about what are the standards now and whether or not we should grant variances to those standards. I don't have a problem granting the variance on the north or the south side, because I think that the, you know, what's faced there is available to a variance. So, you know, the, the senior center or the road, I don't think there's any danger in changing the setbacks there to accommodate laying out the subdivision. However, on the east side, backing up to the existing homeowners, I think that we should attempt to, you know, provide them with what the understood ordinances call for, as opposed to providing a variance on that, even if the setback on the other side of the fence is thirty feet. They may have been granted a variance for another set of reasons that, you know, I'm unaware of. So I'd be in favor of rezoning to NUP. I'd be in favor of granting the north and the south variances as proposed, but I wanna stick with the forty feet on the east side to give protection to the current homeowners.
You know, and I'd just add to that, I, as Mr. Check said, you know, if you can, can drop two lots out of there till you're matching the, the same density lockwise along that buffer, I, that would be something that I would be interested in.
Personally, I would support just the one sidewalk on one side of the street, too. I don't think, a, a neighborhood this small, I don't think it needs sidewalks on both sides of the street. I think it's, I'd rather have a little more grass and not quite as much sidewalk. And, you know, I mean, in my subdivision, we only have them on one side of the street. And once in a while, you have to go around somebody walking on the sidewalk, but it doesn't happen very often, so.
Mayor, I would concur with that.
What about the, the rear loaders? What do y'all think of that on the, in the center?
Personally, instead of having the rear load in the center, I'd like to see a couple houses have side entry garages where applicable. I would rather have that than have all of them be, 'cause I think if you do the rear and the center, you're gonna have all the houses in the center looking very, very much alike. And I would, I would rather have houses, some of them which have a side entry or something, to give it a little more diversity than have the rear entry garages.
Well, my thoughts are, if it's not a functional or safety or engineering reason, that, that we could get around that.
You know, the only thing I say, I like the idea of it, because as, as Kathy said, it gives a little bit of variety there and maybe more of a walkable or neighbor feel, neighbor feel with the back alleys. But after, you know, seeing and reading concerns from the neighbors, I don't, I think that would impact it negatively, because then you're gonna have less green space on the areas that people are gonna see. So, you know, I'd be okay with not having that, if council's not having the rear entrance. I'd, I'd go along with it.
You know, I like the idea, but I don't know that that will help the concerns of those affected.
Kathy or Robin, the, the eastern forty feet, that's, that's, doing that would, would create no variance, correct, if they stuck with forty feet and a twenty-five foot undisturbed?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
I like the idea of the rear entries, but I think in this particular development here, I think it creates more impervious area by using that alleyway. And I think what Karen and Matt suggested, probably lots eighteen, twenty-two and twenty-three, which are on the ends or the corners of that central area, could have side entry garages there, which would help soften the, the appearance of having a row of five houses across there with all, be similar to each other.
You may be able to get them on lot fifteen and-
Well, three and four.
Four, three and four also. So I, I think you probably could find five lots in there you could do a side entry garage.
That gives some diversity.
And, yeah, I'd like to let Mr. Check comment on the side entrance.
And I know if we go down to twenty-four, some of that may change, but-
Here and here, all can be utilized as side entry. This one could, possibly this one here too. This one has a water quality feature, which is gonna be landscaped, so that's gonna be a challenge. I would say one, two, three, four, five, makes sense.
If we set a minimum of five and you could choose- If we set a minimum of five and you could choose which five, you could live with that. Because that way, if the plan changes, if we get out of 24 lots, it gives you some flexibility with it. And that way, you don't have them all...
That also might be a positive feature for your development.
Okay. Anything else that, I mean, I see, it looks like everyone's, seems to be in favor of some sort of approval with some conditions, so...
You want me to try a motion?
Somebody, you know, if someone wants to make a motion.
If I could make a friendly amendment upfront, is that you will reference in your motion Site Plan 2A, because that does note the 40-foot buffer with the 25-foot landscape strip in it on the east side.
Okay.
And a canопoint procedure here is, do we have to tie the variances to the rezoning? Or are those two things separate?
For purposes of the procedural posture, I believe you need to tie them to the rezoning.
Okay, so this is one motion we're making, not multiple motions?
Yes, it's all, it's all on one agenda.
Okay, I just, I want to make sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve RZ 12-16, B C 12-06 for 12855 Hopewell Road. These are homes to rezon from AG1 Agriculture to NUP Neighborhood Unit Plan to develop 29 single-family homes at a density of 4.18 units per acre. Two-part concurrent variance produced a peripherally setback from 40 feet to 25 feet along the east and north property lines and seven feet along the south property lines to allow sidewalks along only one side of the street on the interior of the development. And this is in reference to Site Plan... 2A. 2A, with the changes to deny the variance along the east property line, to limit it to a number, to 24 units, a density I believe is 3.5 units per acre, to have, to allow the variance for the sidewalks only on one side of the street, and to require that at least five of the homes be side entry garage. Did I capture everything?
That's what I don't know that you did. And I might be able to offer up a way that makes this a little bit easier, because the Site Plan 2A takes into account the sidewalks on one side of the street, it takes into account the problem with the road that the Public Works Department had talked about, it takes into account this 40-foot setback with a 25-foot under disturb buffer. So, rather than trying to approve this as it was written and then make a bunch of modifications to it, you could potentially approve the rezoning condition to the Site Plan 2A.
Okay.
And not worry about having to do and then undo a bunch of stuff.
Okay.
With staff recommended conditions. And the thing that I want to make sure you capture is the reduction in 29 to 24.
I did.
You did, okay. All right.
And if you don't mind adding, that we, how we discussed the lots on the east.
You okay with that?
The border would match, would mirror the homes behind there as far as density. I think it'll go from nine to seven lots on the back.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Glad you're making it.
2A is dated January 27th.
There we go.
That's a big deal.
I think that'll clean it up and it'll make it...
Do you want me to try again?
Yeah, there was no second, so I...
Yeah, yeah, let's, so the key words we're looking for are the site plan of January 22nd, 2013.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve based on the site plan dated January 22nd, 2013, Site Plan 2A, reducing the number of lots to 24 from 29 originally and 26 on the site plan, with the, mirroring the lots on the east side, and having at least five of the homes be side entry garages.
What about the alley?
No.
That's captured on the site plan.
Okay.
I understand the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Thurman, second by Councilmember Koots. Any discussion? The only thing I would like to say before we vote on this, and as Matt said, and I know there's citizens here with concerns and whatnot, and sometimes we have to make tough decisions, and hopefully, we've kind of balanced that a little bit and tried to have some conditions that helps with the neighbors that are adjacent. And, you know, again, you guys on the other side have agreed to give up some things, we appreciate working there, so, you know, hopefully, we can move towards something that's a little bit better for everybody. So, anyways, that being said, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Let's see where we are, we'll move on to unfinished business.
First item is consideration of a resolution electing absent municipality status regarding all future lost proceedings related to and triggered by the 2010 census. This is Agenda Item Number 12328. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor Council, a pretty easy one for you tonight, based on some recent steps in the ongoing litigation that is a product of this lost negotiation that you're all aware of. At this point, because there's a stay in place that's going to amount to there being a period of time passing before this actually is taken up again, I would just appreciate if we would make a motion tonight to withdraw this item. And I'll bring it back forward when the time is correct, bring it back forward.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we withdraw this item from tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Koots to withdraw this item on the resolution. So, any discussion?
I just have one question. It could be brought back at any time, as long as it's advertised right.
It absolutely can, I just didn't find the need to punt it every meeting for the next four months, you know, we'll bring it forward again, we need to bring it forward.
Okay. We got a motion and a second, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We can move on to new business.
First item, first item under new business, consideration of the approval of a resolution to set qualifying fees for the 2013 municipal elections. Agenda Item Number 13020. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor Council, I guess I'm bringing this item forward tonight, and I've got to tell you that I think it's something that we have to do in the first month of the year in which an election is occurring. The clerk can confirm that for me, but that's my understanding of it, this is procedural and necessary for an election to occur in November.
Yes, it is. It's by OCGA 21213, Governing Authority of the Municipality, no later than February 1st, needs to publish and affix qualifying fees, the municipal office to be filled in the upcoming primary election. Such fees will be 3% of the total gross salary of the office paid in the preceding calendar. And that is all taken care of in the resolution.
What she said.
Can we make it, can we make it like cheaper for incumbents?
I did have one question, though. I noticed last election, several of our adjacent cities only had the qualifying days be like three days, so that their city clerk didn't have to sit there for 40 hours straight. Is there a reason why we have the qualifying being, because everybody always qualifies either on the first day or the last day, regardless of whether or not you got five days or three days? Is there any reason why it's...
I don't know.
That's just by choice. Some of the clerks do elect to do three or four days and close for lunch, but I keep it open, August 26th through 30th, Monday through Friday, 8:30 until 4:30.
Matt? How do you feel about that?
I'm fine. I'm there.
You're here anyway. I think it's more probably from the elected side that, you know...
I guess, yeah, I'm, of course, essentially to you all, is do you have any interest in it being a different period of time than five consecutive days?
I just, several of the adjacent cities had changed it and just had it for Monday through Wednesday, and I didn't know if there was a reason why they had changed that, or if it was just, like I said, everybody seems to want to qualify either on the first or the last day anyway, so...
Make it more like that?
I think it has to be three days according to the law.
I think there was no, other than it's just what we've set it for, and I'm comfortable moving forward at least this year with that period of time. If we want to look at it some years from now, we will. We're here, so there's no sense...
So, really, it would end up, does the council have any interest in that or just leaving it like it is? I won't give a leave it like it is. Yeah. Okay. All right, so do I have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 13020. Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Koots. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous with Councilmember Lusk having to leave, so he's absent on this vote. Will the city clerk please stand the next item?
Our next item is consideration of a resolution to amend Resolution Number 071104, changing authorized signers and bank account information for the Georgia Fund One Estate Investment Pool Account. This is Agenda Item Number 13021. Ms. Stacy Englis.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This item is just simply housekeeping. We haven't changed the information on our, on our account with Georgia Fund One since November of 2007. So, some personnel have changed, as well as we are going to a new bank, we have new banking services starting up. And so, we had to change the information on there, and the only way to do that is by resolution. So, what you have before you is just changing some authorized signers to take off Nutmar Chafava and include CD, and also to change the bank information from Bank of North Georgia to Sign Trust.
Okay, any questions or motion and a second?
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 13021.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. The third new business item we have already heard, we changed it on our agenda. Did we need to have, did we add an executive session?
I guess I was going to... Would need to. Yeah, let me just offer this up as an idea real quick, you know, maybe during the staff reports. I would, based upon a conversation I had with Councilmember Koots, I would like to be able to call a meeting on Monday, the 28th, for the purposes of considering an intergovernmental agreement for public safety communications amongst four cities instead of five, so that we can track along with the other three cities that are going to adopt it. If you'd like, I'd be very happy to put an executive session on that night as well. Those of you that are here, I believe, all indicated your ability to attend, even Councilmember Longoria by phone, because there will be a forum in the room, that becomes an allowable thing. I was concerned working at a forum in the room. So, everybody who's here could benefit from that executive session in just a couple of days, and the time sensitive, sensitive, whatever, sensitivity is not important, whether we talk about it tonight or Monday, I can go either way. Is that something you all would be willing to come in Monday at 6 o'clock for a meeting that have one Agenda Item and an executive session? Or would you like to go into executive session tonight?
Might as well wait and do it Monday, because you said the meeting Monday wasn't going to take but seven to 10 minutes. So, we might as well make it at least a 12 to 13 minute meeting.
Well, who are we going to have? How many people, how many people are we going to have?
The people that we will not have at this point is Councilmember Lusk. Councilmember Longor, Large indicated he probably could attend. So, it's everybody who's here plus potentially...
Potential to have more of us there than tonight.
Than tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Good deal. The only other thing I want to clarify, by way of staff report, is that if you got my email today about the legislative luncheon tomorrow, you would be eating alone without back in John's Creek if you decide to go over there.
That's the whole place.
And they're not even open for lunch.
Well, that was Mayor Botter's, that was it, so that's... I won't listen to Mayor Botter.
Yeah.
So, it's in Sandy Springs, which hopefully, you've got that email. Just don't drive it.
I think it's 11 o'clock for us.
11 o'clock.
And then 12 o'clock.
That's right. Lunch. Legislative lunch tomorrow, fireworks dinner on Saturday for any of those that can attend. We will have a meeting on the 28th, look for that agenda tomorrow. Good news out of Fulton County today, Councilmember Thurman wants to share. Or no?
Yeah, I'll share. I just didn't know if you were finished or not. No, I had gotten an email, a text message from Commissioner Hausmann today that in the Fulton County budget, the senior services from Milton were approved for $295,000, so we will be able to move forward with taking care of our seniors.
What time did you get that? Just kidding.
Well, if I had glasses on, I could see.
Just kidding, I just got to make sure I got it all better first.
Around 3:30 maybe?
Oh, good, oh, good.
Three? Can't read it.
Y'all got it before I got it.
I got it now, so I'm happy.
And, you know, last but not least, just a quick update, that they had a great, good, a good meeting, I would say. Well, I should say it was a good meeting if any of the things that we agreed to are accomplished. It was a meeting if none of them are, with the interim county manager, David Ware, last week, we got ourselves on the same page with respect to a couple of topics that'll be before us here hopefully soon. Those include a lease option with, a lease with an option to purchase on Station 43, which we've been working on for quite some time, the transition of Providence Park to the city of Milton, the distribution of the Northwest District funds that are post-Shaffer collected that you've been kind of tied up for a period of time, as well as a good conversation on how we could integrate seamlessly and not redundantly with Fulton County as we build our public safety communication system and they build theirs. They have no interest in duplicating a system in any area of Fulton County. And Mr. Ware was committed to the staff's working to get us so that the systems were in parallel and not on top of each other. So, a good meeting last week. I'll bring updates on that stuff as it comes forward. That's really all I have, most of the...
Okay, Matt?
Sorry, I kind of jumped out, jumped out of line there.
So, in the spirit of the last meeting, for all of you Alabama fans, the best way to describe that game was the, the game wasn't as close as the score indicated. I've had all sharp objects removed from my house, stayed away from high rooftops and cliffs, so I'm okay. And, and yes, my wife is real, she is not some kind of internet hoax.
Oh, that's terrible.
I've had about five people make that joke already. So, anyway, just want to say, in the spirit of fun, it was a good time, and congratulations, all of you Alabama fans. And just remember, we Catholics do have this thing called confession, so, at some point. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. And as you know, obviously, it was, was all in fun. All right, anybody else, anything else? Thank you, all staff. Man here.
Mayor, I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second that we adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
My dogs are coming across on their way.